Today's date is December the 27th, 2022, at 6:31 PM. This meeting has been duly advertised and decisions made according to the Meeting Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Would you please stand for invocation, stand for invocation and deflect.
Hello, Father. I recognize my name, the King of God, and I will be done on earth because it is a heaven. Give us this day, and I believe we're in it, and give us trespasses, so we can get those trespasses against us, and either silent or to the station, and live with you, the kingdom, power, and the glory forever. Amen.
For the allegiance to the flag, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, in indivisible, in liberty, and justice for all.
Good evening.
Ms. Swann.
Here.
Dan Port.
President.
Valerio.
Here.
Tom and Brian and Deloria.
President.
Korea.
President.
Sis Trump.
President.
All your tickets.
At this time, we have a more significant session, may I ask?
Okay, I mean, most people go back. Close session.
We now, we now.
The next meeting.
Do you want to make a long?
Yeah, I'm gonna do that one.
Exit.
Yeah.
You move?
Yes.
Ready?
No, it's good.
You have.
Pick your vote and come out.
What's the question?
Most of them.
Lucian?
Yeah.
Second.
Aye, aye.
Good evening, everybody. The purpose again was to discuss attorney's plan for these matters in the contractual negotiations.
Good.
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 Okay, first on the agenda is ordinance 24, providing execution of a financial agreement under the long-term tax exemption law for the developer for the redevelopment area known as Lot 1, Block 255, or tax map of the city. This is second reading. So this is public hearing. Anyone that has something to say, please come forward. Before we do that, we will have a statement from Spyglass Attorney, worded by our attorney, Yolanda Milka, as well.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So in response to the public hearing comments that were made at last meeting, I asked Mr. the Spyglass's attorney, Mr. Scarborough's attorney, for his corporate entity, to provide a statement, which will go to a number of questions that came forward during the hearing. So here is a statement from Mr. Scarborough's attorney, Mr. Turner. Spyglass pilot statement. Spyglass, at Pleasantville Urban Manual LLC, known as Spyglass, is seeking to redevelop and revitalize and underutilize property by construction, constructing 180 well-designed, high-quality luxury apartments, amenities, landscaping, and other site improvements, also known as the development, hereafter, for the residents of Pleasantville. Spyglass has agreed to spend approximately 39 million of its own money, which is a combination of the redevelopers' own funds and lending financing to construct this development. Even with this substantial cash outlet, however, Spyglass cannot proceed with the development without a long-term tax exemption, because the cost and financial risk of this development is so high. Long-term tax exemptions are an important and widely recognized redevelopment tool, and municipalities routinely grant them for redevelopment projects throughout the state of New Jersey. In addition, most of the provisions of the proposed financial agreement for the development are taken directly from the long-term tax exemption statute, and they include many safeguards for the municipality. For example, the annual service charges paid in lieu of taxes on the development, known as the pilot, as set forth in the financial agreement, are subject to annual increases and cannot be less than a certain amount of the as-belorm taxes. Redevelopers' profits on the development are also limited. Similarly, almost all of the certificate of formation language for Spyglass is taken directly to the long-term tax exemption statute, New Jersey statutes, intimated 48:20-5. For example, this statutory language includes language regarding the alleviation of financial difficulties pursuant to New Jersey statutes, intimated 48:20-18. Pleasantville also benefits from this tax exemption. In addition to the substantial benefits of the redevelopment of the property through the construction of the development, Pleasantville is able to keep a greater portion of its quote "tax," close quote, revenue through this long-term tax exemption. Under traditional taxes, L.A. County takes approximately 11.2% of taxes collected from a property in Pleasantville. Under the long-term tax exemption, however, L.A. County only receives 5% of the pilot. Therefore, Pleasantville is receiving a greater share of the open quote "tax," close quote, tax, uh, close quote, pilot revenue from the development than it will receive under conventional taxation. The redeveloper, at the urging of the Pleasantville residents and leadership, has also made concessions with respect to the proposed long-term tax exemption. Redeveloper has agreed to a tax exemption term of 22 years, which is a significant reduction from the originally proposed 30-year term. Redeveloper has also agreed to enter into a community benefits agreement with Pleasantville, which is to be negotiated between the parties in the near future. In addition, Pleasantville has already vetted this development through various approvals and agreements, ensuring the redeveloper will construct the development exactly how Pleasantville envisioned it. Pleasantville adopted and enacted several amendments to the redevelopment plan for the development, which governs the zoning for the property. Pleasantville and Spyglass's affiliate also entered into a redevelopment agreement to set forth the party's rights and responsibilities with respect to the development. This agreement will be assigned to Spyglass. Finally, the Pleasantville Planning Board has granted site plans and other development approvals for the development to Pleasantville, which set forth specific requirements and conditions for the development. Finally, Pleasantville will receive a far greater amount in total tax receipts from the property if the pilot is approved. If the pilot is not approved, then the development will not be built, and the total tax receipts generated by the property will total only $255,120 over 22 years, based on current tax receipts for the property of $9,874 and subject to a proposed 1.5% annual increase. If the pilot is approved, however, then the development will be built and it will generate approximately $8,871, oh, sorry, $8 million, 8,871, sorry, say that again, $8,871,582 over 22 years, based on the Spyglass pro forma, including an assumption of 1.5% annual increases. Accordingly, the net economic benefit of the pilot is approximately $8,616,462. For the above reasons, we develop a respectful request that Pleasantville approve the proposed long-term tax exemption for the development. This will be incorporated into the record, um, that we clerk, and the public hearing comments that were made during Monday's meeting will also be incorporated into this hearing by our members. So we'll open it up.
At this time, the floor is open. Anyone that would like to say anything regarding ordinance number 24, please come forward, state your name.
I'm here. Come forward, state your name, who is at right, and, um, hold on a minute.
Thank you. I hope you can hear me. I'm Jose David Arcontra. I'm a lawyer. I live in Pleasantville. I've lived in Pleasantville for 30, 40 years. I have some comments and questions about these matters. I'm not against development. Nobody's against it, good development. I live in Pleasantville. I want Pleasantville to develop. But I'm for making fiscally sound decisions, and I don't know all the details, and it's hard to comment when I don't know all the details. I've read what I could about what's going on, and it's up to you, as mayor, councilman, and other people, to read those details and protect us. Um, one of the questions, among the questions I have, what provisions, and I don't know if this is exactly the wrong point, but I'll ask it anyway, what provisions, if any, are there, would there be, in this, um, potential builder proposal with the city of Pleasantville to compel the builder, developer, and I've heard it has been a very compelling, to fully comply with, um, the city of Pleasantville housing requirements, more particularly with relevance to providing affordable housing alongside ordinary apartments housing? And I heard that there will be that, so make sure it's clearly a part of this builder's proposal, and the city really pushes on that? And, um, whether it's in compliance with, and I'm sure that it is, but I have to ask the obvious, sometimes asking the obvious question is good to ask, whether it's in compliance with the fair housing issues adequately? And this proposal is within the WR zone in the city of Pleasantville, and maybe the BME zone also? And if so, what provisions, conditions are there pertinent to that zone haven't addressed? I mean, but this is going to be based on property, um, and will it still be accessible? And will they exclude access to the potential beaches that are there, that are already there? Um, and if the beach is further developed, such as there's a baby at the end, there's a little beach that can be further developed, uh, you know, we want to make sure that it's not later on private property, and the city of Pleasantville loses what little beach it has? And, um, and that's in section 300-24 of the Pleasantville code for WRs on waterfront, and also, um, BME is, um, section B of that, section 300-24 of the city code. And those are my questions, because these questions, in essence, have to do with the Mount Laurel decision, which is no longer in effect, and there was big litigation at that time, and I was a law clerk to want the judges handling that right in L.A. County, and I saw that happen. And let's begin with the Burlington NAACP versus Mount Laurel, um, matter with minorities, and of course, Pleasantville is overwhelmingly, I think, minority, but still, the issue is not minority. The issue is fair housing available to people, whether they're minorities or not, and that's in a partly different issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you please turn your cell phones off, please? Anyone else want to talk?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Tim Jones, Pleasantville, president. As I look at this, um, deal, and it's been said many times before, and I'm in agreement that we are not against development, that's good, all of ours just getting a fair share for the taxes that the Pleasantville residents are entitled to with properties in Pleasantville. It came out in the auditor's report just last month, in November, that a little over 75% of the revenue that goes to fund the city of Pleasantville comes from property taxes. So it is, everyone who contributes to property taxes in Pleasantville contributes to the well-being of the city. If you're not paying property taxes, uh, it's hard to figure out how you're really contributing to the well-being of our city. Um, and I was doing some research, and I sent this to several members of the city council. I just researched articles on tax abatements that occurred within this area over the last 25 years or so. Um, from what I've been able to ascertain, that, um, the articles are referred to, um, tax abatements that were given in L.A. County and in this right area, most of them were five-year deals, five-year tax abatements. There were some that were 15-year tax abatements, when, in terms of long-term projects, the long-term that was generally settled upon was a 15-year tax abatement. And in the whole course of that research, and it only reflects on things that were actually published in the press, there were only two deals for 30-year tax abatements. One was the old Linux China site over there in Galway, which was a commercial entity, and is now Barrett. They do industrial development, fabrication and things like that. They employ over 400 people. They got a 30-year tax abatement, rightly so. I see how that contributes to the economic development of the community. The other was a senior housing project in A Harbor City in 2013, I believe. It was, um, it was designated for low-income and seniors. Therefore, complying with what I see as 48, which is the law that allows for power programs to exist in the first place. You know, generally speaking, the New Jersey Constitution says that everyone's supposed to pay their taxes, but they did make this cut out for redevelopment in areas where they see need of development and into attractive development, such as Mr. Scarborough's potentially bringing to Pleasantville. However, there are terms and conditions to those agreements, and one of the fundamental terms to that agreement is to provide what they call affordable housing. According to the statute 48, I mean, colon 12A, 4.1, any of these, um, yeah, I can almost, I can paraphrase and read it here. It says, um, what is it, that, "Redevelopers sets aside affordable residential units for contributors to an affordable housing trust fund established by a municipality. The requirement may be imposed upon developers of market-rate residential at the discretion of the municipality." I paraphrase it. I have it here, and I can share it with anyone if they're like a copy of it. But the fundamental thing is, for market-rate housing, the law requires a component of low-to-moderate income housing or contributing to a fund which needs to be established by the city, and I don't see where that has occurred, and I think these things, these things need to be considered before entering in such a deal. Thank you.
Anyone else want to talk?
Good evening. Dale Archie Pleasantville. I have something there that was kind of interesting, confused at the same time, and it's, it's titled, "It's Planning and Redevelopment Advisory Committee. A committee consisting of planning board chair, administrator, city planning, planner, I'm sorry, zoning officer, city solicitor, and city engineer." As I go on down, it also states that "The Planning and Redevelopment Advisory Committee shall function in an informal manner, and as such shall establish its own rules and procedures as necessity dictates, according and regardless of the capacity in which such committee shall function. All committee meetings shall be non-violent work sessions and not public hearings," as defined in the Public, Open Publics Meeting Act. Since it's, uh, not binding, since it's, um, informal, um, why wouldn't it be made available for the public to add input or just to hear it out? The other thing is, if the planning board chair sits with this Planning and Redevelopment Advisory Committee, if the planning board chair doesn't bring information back to the planning board, or does, the planning board chair, um, pretty much direct the planning board on something that, at this time, I guess he would be privy to. So it's kind of confusing, because if it's not according to rules as far as the law is concerned, and it says it's not binding, but then it's a part in this that stipulates the Open Public Meeting Act. So it makes me feel as the public, like something's going on to keep me away from, so I'm not included, but it's not binding. So I'm confused. As Mr. Jones stated also, what is the portion for the, uh, 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 fair rent for housing for those that might be of a different income? Um, and let me just say this, I'm gonna jump, but please hold your memory right just ready. If you guys met already, and now you're back in session, I feel like it's like the cart before the horse. Only reason I'm saying it is because you didn't hear from the public today before you got into closed session. So now I'm speaking to you, maybe in a manner of what you shouldn't do, but you might have already made your decision. So can I ask that question? Have you made your decision already? Not asking you what it was, but did you make your decision already?
No decision was made till they vote.
So, so when you guys met in the back, no decision was made?
Nope.
Okay, fine.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to talk?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. We call for resident and constituent and neighbor, because we're all living with each other, most of us do, that are here. Uh, when we come to these meetings, our neighbors that are here today and those that have been here prior meetings, uh, we come so that our concerns can be listened to, that they can be considered and not disregarded. Um, I am thrilled that city council decided to table this matter until tonight. We appreciate that. I also am thrilled to hear that some concessions have been made by the developer, at least that lets us know that some thought has been given to some of the things that have been said. Compromise is reasonable, and it is important, so that we as the community are not your adversaries. When we're involved on some level within the process of making decisions, then we can be good neighbors and we can be supportive, but when we're not, then it becomes more adversarial. Um, I just think that it is important, and we're happy that the developer has a vision for that plot land. However, there were many things that were brought forth. Uh, the issue of the 30-year abatement was addressed. All rental units had not been addressed, nor has it been any incentives for youth and seniors, which I'm sure he's in a position to sweeten that deal a little bit more, so we would really appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Anyone else want to talk?
Julio Sanchez, how you doing, council, President Sis Trump, council members, Mayor Ward, good evening. Um, I was with you, you will say, fortunately, but the last meeting I came to, I raised some concerns. I agree with the concern Mr. Fandelero had about their not being a professional on the financial side for the city, you know, to take care of the city's interests. I don't know if that was correct. Again, we established that they're, they're a construction company, it's very affluent, very successful, has been that way for numerous years, I think at least since the 60s. I, I struggle to understand why they would need an abatement. They're not charging under fair market value, they're actually charging over fair market value. If somebody is successful, they're not starting a company, they already have money. They intend to make money because they're charging over market value. If they believe in a project, why they need an abatement? It just doesn't make sense to me. Now, I can see if it was something, you're talking about five, six years, if they're trying to get it occupied, but if they can't get it fully occupied in five to six years, then it's not a good idea. It's not a good plan. They don't believe in the plan themselves, if they need the 22 years before they feel like they can turn a profit. Especially a company such as theirs, all that research, they had 19 million dollar projects, nine million dollar projects, they do shopping malls, hospitals. Why can't they build here? I'm sure they didn't get an abatement when they, you know, anything else they did. I know they tried it in Ocean City, and they had a fairness and tax committee put together of residents, and they weren't having it. Have we considered going to the residents and having a fairness and taxes group to see how the residents feel about companies coming in and making money and not paying their fair share of taxes?
No.
Are residents going to get a 22 years before they have to pay the taxes on their properties? There's gotta be some fairness at some point. We can't keep selling our assets and selling the citizens out for people to come in and make money and leave.
That's right.
These aren't residents. They're not going to set up shop here, they're going to be landlords here, collect our money and take it back to their communities. At what point do you advocate for us? Our land, yes, it's been vacant a long time, but at what point do we value our land? Do we value ourselves? That is the best land we have in the city of Pleasantville. We have nothing better. Some of the only undeveloped base-land property in the state, you guys are going to give it away? It, it makes no sense, and from what I understand, they didn't even pay market value to buy it. At what point do you stand up for us? Then we cry about the salaries of the fire department and the police department. Well, if you start taxing people who come in here and make money, maybe we have money to pay the people who protect our city and our residents. You can't give it all away. At some point, they gotta pay. Have a good night.
Anyone else want to talk?
Good evening, everyone. Lisa Sanchez, longtime Pleasantville president. Um, as same thing happened as last meeting, he takes my thoughts right out of my head. Uh, all I want to know is, at what point do we stop being desperate Pleasantville? At what point do we look out for our community and the people in our community? Because at this point, it just seems like my whole life I've been around politics and in politics and the ins and outs of politics. It seems like we're always giving something to somebody to the, on the outside community to drain a life force from our community. Who gives anything back to us? You, you get this land for a hundred thousand dollars, if that's what it was, if he even paid it, I'm not sure, he may have, he may not, I don't know. Did we ever reach out to the housing authority in Pleasantville, said they wanted to lay in a bill something to give back to us? Because I'm sure they would pay way more than a hundred, two hundred thousand, whatever it was that he paid. Then we go give them a 22-year tax abatement. Okay, last meeting was a 30-year, so we drop it down to a 22. I think I let ask last meeting, because I've been a housing 15 years, I've opened businesses, I've, I've, I've structured other people's businesses. I've never heard anybody not paying nothing. 22 years is, 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 it's not a compromise. He's still getting over on us.
He'll sell it.
Five to seven years is, is, is a compromise. So what he's going to, exactly, what he's going to do is, he's going to sell it before the time's up, he'll never pay us anything. 300,000, 400,000, 500,000 is nothing compared to the 5.5 million he's proposing to make the first year. And that's the basic, basic, basic amenities in that building. I just ask you all, Pleasantville, stop giving us away for free. Stop letting people come in our community and take our light and dim our light. We are somebody, we are something, we're worth something.
Yes.
Y'all keep letting people come in and giving them stuff, and stop doing it. We are worth something. Our children are worth something. That's all I ask, to stop giving us away for free. We're worth something.
Hey, what else? Jerry King, Pleasantville, president. Good evening, council, mayor. Um, you guys have heard many of our concerns over the past several weeks, and we want to see the city grow, we want to see the city progress, we don't want to see it die and fade away. And we understand the property sat there for many years, uh, but I don't believe that's a reason for us to go into a bad deal and a deal that's not for the city, just because it sat for so long, to just rush into something. And I appreciate the fact that Mr. Scarborough looked at his ridiculous proposal and came back down to reality. And one of the things I learned about the art of negotiation from a man by the name of Johnny Cochran, he said, "You make your proposal so ridiculous, and you negotiate down to what it is that you really want." And that's what Mr. Scarborough did. He knew his proposal was ridiculous to begin with. He never in a million years thought he was going to get it. And in the art of negotiation, what he did was a checkmate move, not quite a checkmate move, it was like a check, because he got to where he really wanted to be, which is 22 years. He still has two negative impacts that he hasn't dealt with, closing the street, that's going to kill off two businesses. He never addressed it, he danced around it. You know, I said it before, these people are sophisticated with how they do things, but here again, I learned for many law firms, there's something called color of law, it looks like law, sounds like law, appears to be law, but it's not law. And one of the things I want to remind, uh, your city attorney, your officer of state, and our officer of court, you're bound to keep these people straight. They're not expected to know the law, but you are. And you said this wasn't done under your watch. Well, if it is proved, it's going to be looked at very closely. And there's been a lot of things that have gone on in the city over the years that have been improper, and people have gone to jail for it. And I want, I want to remind you, from being somebody who was involved with federal police agencies during a period of my life, don't think that you're not still under observation. Don't think that the feds aren't still watching us, waiting, sometimes baiting. Don't think you don't have people who are undercover, just throwing you curveballs to see if you fought for it. And beware that, like the Bible scripture says, "Unless a man strives unlawfully, he strives unbound." And whatever you do, excuse me, whatever you decide to do with this proposal, if there's anything that's improper or found out to be lawful, it makes the whole project null and void. And there are things in that proposal, as Mr. Jones stated, and as Mr. Mr. Archer stated, that are not in compliance with law. Thank you. So I ask you to consider that, and whatever you do, make sure it's lawful. I don't think that's unreasonable. Anyone else want to talk?
Good evening, everyone. I hope you all had a nice holiday. I just found something really interesting, it was back in 2012, where Pleasantville Council considered tax abatements for big housing projects. And it was for the California Avenue comments that he sold for a five-year tax abatement. And you Mayor Ward has said you were concerned about the redevelopment of the Lake Bay project, requesting the tax abatement as well. Still in the works, the Lake Bay waterfront redevelopment calls for luxury prime mansions on thirty-eight acres of bayfront land. And you happen to say, "What happens if others ask for this?" That is my concern. Lake Bay is a prime real estate. There should be an application, procedure, and criteria put in place, so we make sure that not everyone is able to get this abatement by saying, "You did it for California Avenue, you should do it for us," you said. This is what, you know, I can't understand twenty years, that it changed from five to thirty to twenty-two. It was so concerning, we didn't want people to take advantage of us for five years, more than five years, and all of a sudden now we're just starting to give them, you know, abatements to keep them come in here. We can't keep, you know, citizens of Pleasantville, I would love to get an abatement, how do we do it? You know, it's just, I just think that we, something went wrong in twenty years, something went wrong. We're giving our city away, and we shouldn't, we really should not be giving our city away. We should look for, you know, things to be done. I'm sure we could have got something done on that land, but this man got it for peanuts, and we know what that land is worth, it's prime real estate, as you always said, it's prime real estate. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else from the public?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to start, in the last few meetings, the residents have come here, David Calvert, resident of Pleasantville, residents have come and pretty much attacked City Council about this project. I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention, that this body, this council body here, are not responsible for this deal that has stayed in place. At the time when this took place, the only council people that was on board here, I believe it's Ricky, Councilman Swine, Councilman Davenport, at the time, Councilwoman Ward. And when this came up, about giving this land away for nothing, it basically got a gift, two hundred thousand dollars for that big parcel of land, you had to be out of your mind or you'd be something like that. But out of all the people on council that I named, Mr. Davenport, that just came on, he voted no, I just for everyone to know that he voted no. Wasn't a good deal. So at that time, Councilman Lockman was here, like I said, Swine, Christmas, Harmon, Tweeter was the mayor, and Ms. Pink was the business manager. Basically, we got sold a bill of goods that is not worth anything. Like I said, we started off with this project, we sold that land for the two hundred thousand, which wasn't really a, 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 sold, it was a gift. When it was sold, the city did absolutely nothing to protect the residents. Because before he got that land, there should have been a reverter clause in there, if he didn't do certain things, that that land would come back to the city of Pleasantville. No reverter clause. So he could basically, soon as he got it, he could have got it and sold it for four million dollars, and we wouldn't have got anything. Then he gets the land with this idea of, he's going to build this project, these houses. And then, he got it, and then he comes back and says, "I'm going to tax a baby." What? A tax abatement? Okay, you want a tax abatement? I tell you what, you just got a sweetheart deal. Why don't you pay for at least a part of the sewer line that just went to your project? We, the taxpayers, had to pay for his sewer line so he could build. Why didn't he pay for part of it? I just don't understand. But please, I don't want people to jump all on this city council, because they had nothing to do with it. Burke wasn't here, Victor wasn't here, Familaro wasn't here, or Councilwoman Thomas wasn't here. So you need to go back to all these people who sold us down the drain. It wasn't them.
Anyone else from the public?
Am I on the time?
Yeah, let's try.
Who timed it? Who timed it?
Yeah, right now everybody's kind of...
No, I've been counting.
Been counting three minutes.
There's no way in the world, there's no way in the world, no way. Well, people, on people, on this side, especially the administration, is supposed to look out for the best interest of the residents of this city, and there was a, what is it, the CARES Act grant or something, where Atlantic City, we want to keep preparing ourselves to Atlantic City, got thirty-six million dollars. You know what, Pleasantville back? A little more than a million dollars. And the man said, "Gad, then open your mouth and say we need more money." So I know that she's not looking out for our best interest.
Anyone else from the public?
Urban Moreno Rodriguez, Pleasantville, New Jersey, happy holidays, Pleasantville City Council. I just wanted to confirm, was the spyglass letter available for the meeting today? Was that document available online about?
It was mine.
Okay. The letter mentioned...
I received it today.
Okay. And the letter mentioned something about a community benefits agreement? Is that, was that available online before the meeting today?
So it's still a relevant material, because we're going over it.
So you're still going over it?
That's right.
And it's my understanding, city solicitor, that the Pleasantville City Council will still vote on this today, even though the agreement hasn't been looked over fully?
The financial agreement did, that's still being negotiated. It wasn't, it's not a term that germines the finance agreement. There were outlines that were provided for it and were negotiated, and that was substantially already prepared and agreed on as proposed, but there will be some council edits to it. But it's not, there's no changes to the finance agreement. The finance agreement has been provided to you, the twenty-two years has been lowered, and there will be the addition of a community benefits agreement that will be negotiated or continuing to be negotiated.
So that finance agreement was available before the city council today?
No.
Because I couldn't find it.
No, you have to come to my office to get it.
So we have to come to your office to get that, because you just called the special city council meeting?
No, 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 that was been available since ordinance one, since the first reading.
The special agreement with the twenty-two year?
The financial agreement to this ordinance has been available since first readings, which was December the fifth.
So December the fifth, there was already a twenty-two year?
No, 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 we refer to the agreement, they chose, this meeting today is regarding the revision to the terms of thirty to twenty-two years.
That's the only change.
That's the only change. The agreement itself was made available, you have to come to my office, due to the contents of it, it had to be available.
So what exactly has City Council been voting to today?
The second reading is the financial agreement with the change of twenty-two years.
So City Council's been a vote on the financial agreement, but none of the community benefits agreement has been finalized, all that has been negotiated, right? Is that true?
It's substantially in the form that was presented, but we're still negotiating.
Well, Pleasantville City Council, I mean, I don't know what to tell you, but really, this should be tabled until all of it has been hashed out.
True.
I don't understand why we're in such a hurry to vote for. This could wait until the new year, until the new city council's installed, to make sure that we understand the community benefits agreement. There's, in this whole process, the city has been shunned out. I just really don't understand why there's a lack of transparency here. What exactly are you trying to hide? Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council, happy holidays to you, each and every one of you, dear families. Just for the record, to be very clear, I am for this particular project. Something, right, you're saying, that I think that should be considered, it should be endorsed. I believe, right, you're saying, that you have changes, as the solicitor read from their statement as to what was responded to at the last council meeting. And use a question, right, you're saying, that the community put forward that would then answer it in that manner, correct? Well, I thought that this meeting, we would go further in terms of discussing and having those questions asked, asked and answered by the person, right, that's proposing this before us, that we would have an opportunity to hear directly from the individual themselves, and it would be some level of exchange between this community and the developer, in terms of the questions that were posed. I do think that it's unfair that the questions were pre-proposed, right, you're saying, and then answered, without the benefit of any further comment and/or information provided by the persons asking the questions or the person answering the questions. Level part about it, there is something that you pointed out, that this was, was this twenty-two year claim something that was offered to you, right, or was it something that you negotiated? Secondly, right, you're saying, did you propose any other years that may have been lowered, like fifteen, which was, I think, would be more reasonable even to consider? Because here, right, the city gets something, and the developer gets something. Here, right, you're saying, there's also something there about a risk factor. Why would we be at any concern with the risk factor, when the risk factor is such, right, you're saying, that is fifteen property, and here in the city of Pleasantville, in the city of Pleasantville? That man down there, right, is going to bring in, you know, I believe, right, you're saying, other entities, right, there will be more things that's going to be attracted, right, so that people will come into this city. I do think that you're starting, right, you're saying, from a point, right, that you're not negotiating, things are being, right, you're saying, dictated too. And you have to turn around, right, you're saying, and say, "Well, hold it, hold it." I look for a union, and we negotiate contracts, right, and there's always the high and the low, right, you're saying, it gives and it takes, the hard and the soft, negotiations. Well, here is a situation, and you guys, right, you're in a very good position, because of where the land sits at, and what it's going to bring to the city of Pleasantville, and more important, right, you're saying, the revenues that it's going to bring to the developer themselves. They didn't select it because, right, they were going to lose. There is no loss here for them. There's always, there's nothing for the gain. I'm asking you guys, right, you're saying, to go back to the table, come, right, you're saying, with offer that you, that's something that's representative, right, you're saying, of fairness to us, right, and fairness to this community, and also, look out, right, you're saying, for the best interest of the city. I'm going to use white. A Duster's Farming, three hundred Southwest Avenue, next to the property in question, Pleasantville, we do it. Mr. President, I know you and your loved team are tired, the evening has been alone, and later and then I'll get to show a speech in my life, I'll get a team of these alone speeches. But the point is, I stand for you to say that we cannot give away Alameda City. Fifty-two years, I climbed this step, and fifty-two years ago, and you, my legislators, you have done well. I just want to quote a little line from Alameda Bay. She said that Lake Bay is prime real property. Now, the great ocean city wants the sledge, and they need somewhere to put the sledge. You can't put the sledge in a truck, so the pipes are out and probably there. That property was purchased, and it was sold, and now is guarded. Here come the epidemic, which stopped everything. Yes, my fellow taxpayers, you are receiving your taxes from that property, and I know they're not cheap, because I'm mixed over, okay? If someone asks what it's time to be getting, we are getting dollars for a property. Yes, we're going on, I think it's three or four years. My point is, and I'll take my seat, I know you're not going to have on your record that you voted to give away. The numbers are there, I'm not going to get into them, I've been in three sessions, community keepers, you speakers, you guys were good, and you made some key points, but never, and I did a study in my history, and listen, gentlemen, you say, "Aqua City did a thirty-year abatement." When I heard that, I couldn't believe it, I couldn't get to the last meeting, but I plead to you and say to you, don't let a vote be on your record, and you order us to give away Pleasantville. I was only bored, and pleasant, and the development and the plan is not together, and your attorneys have spoken. There are some matters, that we are voting on a property that was laid out and designed for the other developer. I will take my seat, and plead to you to say, please, take this very, very, very soon, and Pleasantville, I will find property, and we are, we see you right now.
I just want to say something to the public. We were in the back and we had some discussions about this project, and I had my concerns about it from the beginning, I never thought it was a good deal, but I know we need to do something with that property, something needs to happen. But I cannot put my name on something that I had no negotiations in. And we had a conversation in the back just now, listening to certain comments that are just being made, it's made me think a little differently again, and I just don't think that this thing is right right now, and I think we need to sit down and go over this, and make sure that we have some council people there. There were some negotiations done, but none of us were up there, and none of us knew anything about it. And I'm not going to put my name on something that I had no input on. So as of right now, I'm saying, I would move, let's table this thing again, so let's get it right.
I made the motion last week to table this, with the understanding that we would have input as to what we wanted and what concession, and everybody knows where I stand. And everybody knows where I stand on this project. I'm not going to lull anybody into a false sense, but I thought everybody needed to come together and discuss this and have all of these questions brought up somewhere. We come in tonight, and it's already been discussed. That's not how things should work. I'm sorry if anybody's offended. I'm sorry if I'm offending people that I work with, but I'm sorry. I'm sorry for the people of Pleasantville that you're not getting, you might not get what you want, but at least we can say, we did this. And everybody thinks that it's prime property. This is prime property from the tip of Key West to the tip of Maine. There are no, no more waterfront properties on the East Coast. And he sold it for two hundred thousand dollars. And we're going to get eight million dollars back in twenty-two years?
So you have a motion on table to adopt in a second. Now you have a collateral motion to table, so you have to do something about the live motion to adopt.
There can be a lot of some file.
So there was a motion to table that was a collateral motion, but there's already a live motion to adopt. So I believe the council president called the question, which means everybody has to vote on the motion to adopt. There's already a live motion on the table. Yeah, you have a live motion on the table. You would have to take a vote. That's it.
Who seconded?
Seconded by, first by Swan, and seconded by Camona.
At eight oh six P. M.
You can't make a motion, resent that motion?
When you already have a motion on the floor.
That's, you can't take the vote. Just take the vote.
So if this only downs tonight, so that kills the deal?
No, we negotiate.
It's table, right?
What we not going to do, we going, she directed that question to the solicitor.
Okay, so we're right now in an entire year of a governing body. Once January one hits, this ordinance would be with you die if you don't vote tonight. So you would either have to call a special meeting to vote again, or you would have to come back and start from the beginning. Councilman, does that answer your question? I just wanted to make sure that it was shared. So your year starts again next week, so if this is not voted at all, we would have to restart the clock all over again.
Okay, so we can, we're starting to negotiate again.
What if you decide, whatever the decision is tonight?
But with, but with council at the table, right? Yes, negotiate.
Does that answer your question, Councilman? Okay, thank you.
I'm negotiating contract.
What I heard was, what I heard, please, everybody, please, everybody. What I heard, at eight oh six P. M., there was a motion to adopt by Councilman Swan and a second by Councilman Camona. There was discussion. Mr. Councilman Davenport spoke, and then he gave a collateral motion to table. The motion in itself, no disrespect, was out of order because it was already a live motion to adopt. So I was instructing that there is a live motion. What I did hear council president say, and I don't want to put this, he said, run the vote. He called the question, which means discussion has ended, and we're now voting on the motion to adopt. That's what I heard. Am I wrong or what I heard?
No, excuse me. I understood that in the beginning. All I said was that I can't consciously vote, that's all.
Absolutely. And I heard you, I heard you. And I didn't want to, I don't want to say that what you said was absolutely your entire discussion, because there was a discussion, but there was also collateral motion to table. That's, that was all. So then it had to be, want everybody to take back. But then I heard the council president, they needed to there, call the vote. So what I heard was to ready the vote, but also understand that even if you move the table, this governing body and this ordinance ends as the votes are already heard. Excuse me, I have to talk to my colleagues.
That's all right.
That's all. This could die in a way, so you would have to come back and first reading on the ordinance all over again, come the first reading. So that's all I wanted to instruct, that either way, my client understands what's on the table references, okay?
So question, you guess, you will come there.
Well, not for that. You would have to start scratch because the ordinance.
She's on the floor for ordinance number twenty-four, girl called Swan.
I'm going to say yes.
Davenport.
No.
Penlara.
No.
Thomas.
No.
Camona.
No.
Yes! The motion for ordinance twenty-four did not, was not carried over, that. Okay, next I need a motion approve Bingo and Raffle X's. Motion.
Second.
Girl called Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Penlara.
Yes.
Thomas. Korea.
Marcus.
Siskel. Motion approved. Do you hear? Next is the public motion.
There you go.
What's up, ladies?
How you doing? I'm good, how are you?
Motion close the public portion.
Motion.
I can hear it. The Bingo place? The Bingo place.
Uh, second.
Who was the first? I'm sorry, I missed that. Who did, who made the motion?
To what?
To, to close public.
Yes.
And second by who?
Second by who?
Sally, thank you. On the table? Okay, next is comments from Mayor and Council Chair.
I'd like to say something. Good evening, everyone. You can hear me, right?
Yes.
I just wanted to say on this, on ordinance number twenty-four, I heard a few comments that I wasn't comfortable with. It wasn't as if anyone was trying to do any backdoor deal. What we heard last week was go back and try and get a community benefit agreement. We did that. What we heard was that thirty years was too long. We tried to negotiate. We did not start at twenty-two. We started higher and worked down to twenty-two. So I don't want anyone in here to think that we just went somewhere and struck a deal real quick and came back. We tried to come back with something that we thought would be something that you would agree to, and that was all too. The council, but the way they wanted, the way they go tonight, that was their choice. They, they had that right. But I just wanted you all to know that there was nothing shady going on with that. All we, we didn't hear any figures last week. We didn't hear anything. And the way everything is usually done is through committee. That wasn't done through committee, but it was, it was a conversation that we had with the developer, and we thought it was, we thought it sounded, I mean, it was much better. Everyone's doing pilots right now. Pleasantville is, we're, we're, we're good. Yeah, and I don't, I just don't see anyone else breaking the door down to come and give us any development, you know? And if you read in the paper, in Galloway, they're getting ready to do a pilot. You know, so it's not as if it's just Pleasantville that everyone's coming to take advantage of Pleasantville, and that is prime land. I always call it my best kept, our best kept secret, because it is, it's prime, beautiful property back there. But no one else is coming here and it's sat vacant for so long, and no one else is coming to develop it. So we are doing what we think is best. What's going to happen now is hopefully it'll be just something that we can, you know, maybe it'll be, things happen for a reason, they say, so maybe it'll be something that'll be better. But hopefully, it'll be something that'll bring us some rateables and be able to be, take pride in that area down there. Happy New Year, Paul, if I don't get a chance to say it later.
Councilman Swan. All I can say is Happy New Year, this is definitely my last meeting, and I got a couple of yesterday, so thank you very much.
Everybody, Happy New Year, have a pleasant, safe one. Happy New Year. Happy New Year, everybody, have a blessing.
I, I think everybody should have a great New Years.
Councilman Davenport.
I suppose it's Happy New Years, so look forward to two thousand twenty.
Happy New Year to everyone.
No, I want to say something. I seen different people come up to the mic. I seen one individual grandson of one of the city, city fathers that had passed along and that city father had part, was part of a lot of power programs in the city of Pleasantville. We will leave it. All for our power programs in the city of Pleasantville. I seen a, a young man from the city, he came up and we talked about his family, he was here, and most of this, this family benefited from the power program over in Woodland. Wasn't for the power program. We, when you have a, a four or a community, please, please.
We can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I got sick over the holidays, I didn't like this, I care.
We care, man. Just tell him, tell him why you're up on the mic, that's all. Tell him why you're up on the mic. Thank you for working with me, my brother, thank you.
There you go. And listen. Um, Latin American. He said twenty, he said twenty years on some council, two hundred, two hundred million dollars worth of projects, um, Center City, a lot, two, um, Cambria project, you know, Woodland. Safety, please, China, China, China. All of these projects that we've done, that library, and that, over these past twenty years. I'll tell you for granted, you think this is like some, like some, some stuff you, it's planned with, but what you really actually playing with is the fact that the city could be stifled by that. As council up here, I don't know, I need to be supportive, you know? This is, um, you have to put your big boy shoes on and do what's best for the city of Pleasantville. Period. Can't sit back and say, okay, we don't want concessionaire's agreement when you know the city is set. Can't say you don't want a concessionaire's agreement when you know at that particular time fifteen million dollars in debt, fifteen million? And then we had fifteen seventy-five million dollar agreement? Then you come back to the mic and you listen to a handful of people, and then they talk about, and I ain't disrespectful to you, I'm not trying to be disrespectful to you, but you understand all the facts here. Come back and you say this particular term, we got a young man that kept talking about you can do this, you can do this on your own and everything, now we got one point seven million dollars more of debt because of a, a couple of streets that were done, that was the reason why we was turning back the grants and giving the grants back. We had mitigated circumstances. Second highest in the county in taxes, second highest. One of the worst school districts in the state. Worst school district, and the people that's responsible for the kids is at the mic. Like they got everything just perfect on their side. You have to do what's best for the city of Pleasantville, you have responsibility. What's going to be on your watch here? The city going to actually vote you in for twenty more years? You going to stay here for twenty years, twenty years and no projects? So we had twenty years of projects, and then you get here and everything, and ever since some people have been up here on the city council, we haven't got anything done. So we, we go from getting projects and getting things done to getting nothing done. No disrespect, because I got, I got relatives there and everything, but I think Pleasantville want to turn it to Gary Indiana. All of these different small towns around the United States of America. Some people that can't get any traction whatsoever. When a developer comes in and he sees that parcel land, he looks up that parcel land too, he does the same thing that you doing when you attempting to try to buy something. How long has it been vacant, must have on the land, and all that, he does a survey and all that. Mr. Harmon, that, that lot's been empty, that lot has been empty next to you forever. You sat here in this seat trying to get this traction. You sat here in this seat trying to get this traction. Those deals ain't going to never be perfect until you're perfect liking and everything. If y'all, if that was the case, you the greatest negotiators all in, in the whole wide world, the seats are going to be, there going to be seats available, come up here and see what you can do. Because I learned from, I learned, I learned from people, I learned from people and, and got the type of movement where we made, that, that's the track record, that's my track record, whether you like it or not, that's my track record. We moved projects. We moved projects for the betterment of the city of Pleasantville and they got progress, whether you like it or not. When we go back behind these closed doors, this is what we, this is what we, this is what we done. And the trend, please, the trend that's happening now, this past year, right here, you don't want that label on the city of Pleasantville. You get that label on the city of Pleasantville, that's all you broke, it's gone, it's gone, it's gone, it's done. Should have told me you didn't want nothing. I entertain a motion to adjourn. No, excuse me, I entertain a motion to go to the executive session.
I just, one more thing that I wanted to clear up is that for the CARES money, it was based on the population that you had in your city. And when there was extra money to be had, you had to apply for that through the governor. And we did try for that, but it's only certain communities that got it. But the CARES Act, why we got, what we got was because it was based on the population of Pleasantville, not because anyone was child.
Hello. Listen, I just want to make this here clear. This project, it really means a lot to the city of Pleasantville. And whether it's good or bad, it's going to be our seven names on here that's going to have to take the blame or take the credit for it. And with that being said, I want to make sure that we have a part in what's being done and we can put our name on it and say that we did the best that we could do. So therefore, as I look back at it right now, I had no say on it. I don't think anyone up here had any say on it. I asked in the back, our council president, were you there when these last negotiations were made? He said no. That stuck in my brain and then when I had certain community people come up here and speak on that, there's no way that I can put my name on it if I didn't have any credit to it. If I didn't do anything, any negotiating or anything to make it better or worse, I'm not going to put my name. So understand is that it's not something that I'm saying no to, but moving forward, I think that every council member with something this important needs to be able to say that they had input on it and they agree with it. So that's where my concern is. And I just want the public to know that no one gets up here and makes me change my mind. I'm my own man. I stick to my, what I feel, and this is what I feel. I really feel that we need to make sure as a council that we have our input on this project.
Thank you, council. Madam clerk, where we at?
We're in at number six, a motion to go to the executive session.
I entertain a motion to go to an executive session. Hold a favor. Miss Solicitor?
Yes. This executive session is with regards to professional services, to track negotiations. And this just lasts approximately 30 minutes?
We stand here?
I need a motion to go back to regular session?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I would like to inform the public that during executive session, city council and mayor discuss matters pertaining to professional services for 2023. The city council decision will be rendered to the public at the reorganization meeting scheduled for January 4, 2023, at 6:00 PM held in this municipal court. No further actions taken.
No further business, you want to adjourn?
Yes. Motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.